Turn off all cell phones and put them on vibrate. Tonight's invocation will be provided by Ryan Turner of New Somers Baptist Church, and followed by the invocation, we will have the pledge to the flag.
Let us bow with a word of prayer. Most holy God, before we petition you for anything, we want to thank you for all things. Thank you for the grace and mercy you provide us to handle the affairs of our daily living. Thank you for affording us the opportunity to do the work that you have designed for us to do in order to make life better for someone else. God, I specifically pray now for the communities of Baltimore. Because we've seen you bless our communities before, God, we know that you still have the power to do it again. If ever we needed you in the corners and the crevices of our communities, we sure do need you now. Lord, we need you to travel down the roads, the streets, the boulevards, and the avenues, and send a special outpouring of your healing power on the minds and the lives of all of our community members here in Baltimore. God, there are so many people in our communities that feel an absence of your presence because their eyes are clouded by the turmoil that plagues our communities. But we understand that you have not brought us this far to leave us now. So God, go now into our communities and bless every broken situation. Men, every broken heart, and flood them with an abundance of your grace and mercy. God, we come against violence and despair, depression, and poverty within our communities. I pray for each and every government official. Give them the peace and soundness of mind so that they represent us with confidence, integrity, and humility. Though we live now in strange times, we are encouraged because we are hard-pressed on every side, but not crushed, perplexed but not in despair, persecuted but not abandoned, struck down but not destroyed. And so we claim the victory, and it's in the one whose name is most holy that we pray, and say amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Thank you again. The clerk will call the roll of the members.
President Middleton, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark. Madam President, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Tonight's showcase Baltimore presentation will be provided by the Director, Reginald Moore of the Baltimore City Department of Recreation and Parks.
Thank you, Madam Vice President Middleton, to other council members, citizens, and staff. I'm excited to be here on behalf of Baltimore City Rec and Park to talk about a few exciting opportunities that's happening in our Baltimore City Rec and Parks Department. The guy that I'm holding in front of my hand, I have 101 reasons why everyone should get this next edition of our Explorer edition. It's our 101 activities that we're offering this summer. You can get them at our rec centers. Also, you can get them at our administrative office, as well as we have them in the mayor's office and the council president's office. The second highlight I want to talk about is, of course, we're registering now. Families are trying to find something to do with their kids for the summer. So we have our summer camp registration that's taking place now at our 43 rec centers. Please visit our rec centers or visit us online to find out more information about our summer camp registration. And finally, connecting competition to communities. It's our first annual Charm City Games. It's going to take place this year, July 13th through the 20th. It's an opportunity for young men and women ages 12 to 14 to compete and represent their districts. The sports that we're going to offer, of course, is boys' and girls' tennis, boys' and girls' soccer, boys' and girls' basketball, and boys' and girls' track. For more information, you can definitely reach out to our website, where we'll have a list of information about how you can be involved. So I encourage all youth to get out this summer, be a part of Charm City Games, and make Baltimore a great experience for all. Thank you.
Thank you. It is the council's custom to generalize the invocation. I ask for a motion to generalize the prayer. Councilman Burnett for the motion, second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of generalizing the invocations, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The motion is adopted. We will now proceed with the adoption of the journal.
Madam President, the Journal of the Proceedings from the April 15th City Council Meeting is on the council members' desks.
Is there a motion to approve the journal? Motion moved by Councilman Henry, and second by Councilman Schleyer. All those in favor of adopting the journal, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The motion carries, and the journal is adopted. Bill signed by the ex officio mayor. Bills signed by the ex officio mayor can be found on Page 2 of the agenda. And bills to be introduced.
City Council Bill 190373, Urban Renewal Canton Industrial Area Amendment. For the purpose of amending the urban renewal plan for the Canton industrial area to revise the boundary area of the plan, to remove a certain property and to revise certain exhibits to revise certain exhibits to reflect the change, waiving certain content and procedural requirements, making the provisions of this ordinance severable, providing for the application of this ordinance in conjunction with certain other ordinances, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsors Cohen, Scott.
This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill 190374, Rezoning 1641 North Bond Street. For the purpose of changing the zoning for the property known as 1641 North Bond Street as outlined and read on the accompanying plat from the R8 zoning district to the C1 zoning district, sponsors Stokes.
This has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill 190375, Baltimore City Residency Requirements, Prohibition Against Purposeful Evasion. For the purpose of prohibiting a reorganization or shift in staff reporting requirements in order to purposefully evade the Baltimore City residency requirements, and establishing that a violation of that provision, prohibition, is an ethics violation enforceable under the city ethics code. Sponsors Sneed, President Middleton, Henry, Scott, Pinkett, Dorsey, Bullock, Cohen, Burnett.
Chair, co-sponsor, Clark, and Reisinger, and Stokes. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Sneed.
Thank you. This bill, colleagues, just basically says that we are, we take a lot of thought, or I do anyway, into the bills that we put in, and so we just want to make sure that the original bill for the residential requirements, that the directors and people that report to directors are actually living in the city. We do not want people to essentially come up with a new organizational chart just so they don't have to live in a city. I'll say it over and over again, when we are living in the city, and when our kids are going to school in the city, and when we are utilizing parks and recs in the city, we are actually making our communities safer, greener, and better. So please, colleagues, consider supporting this bill because this basically says that you need to live in Baltimore City if you have one of these positions. Thank you.
Looking forward to the hearing. It has been assigned to the Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee.
City Council Bill 190376, Financial Disclosures, Fixing Filers, Filing, and Filings. For the purpose of requiring that appointees sign notices evidencing their understanding of certain requirements under the city ethics code, requiring that agencies identify certain positions required to file financial disclosure statements prior to filing a newly created, prior to filling a newly creative or vacant position, requiring that agencies include within certain job postings and advertisements whether the position is required to file a financial disclosure statement, including certain public servants within the general requirement to file financial disclosure statements, expanding the directorships that certain public servants are required to disclose on their financial disclosure statements, establishing processes for the Board of Ethics with regard to certain public servants who failed to file their financial disclosure statement by the required date, conforming and clarifying related provisions, providing for a special effective date, and generally relating to the city ethics code. Sponsors Dorsey, President Middleton, Henry, Schleifer, Scott, Stokes, Costello, Pinkett, Cohen, Burnett, Clark, Reisinger, Bullock, Sneed.
This has been assigned to the Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee, and Councilman Dorsey has three bills together, and he's going to speak on three, all three at the end.
City Council Bill 190377, Whistleblower Rights and Responsibilities. For the purpose of prohibiting retaliation against whistleblowers for making covered disclosures, defining certain terms, establishing the whistleblower board, providing for the appointment, term, and source of the whistleblower board members, authorizing the whistleblower board to adopt implementing rules, regulations, and procedures, establishing complaint procedures for whistleblowers, authorizing the Office of the Inspector General to investigate whistleblower complaints, detailing remedies and disciplinary action the whistleblower board can take when ruling on a whistleblower retaliation case, establishing judicial and appellate review, requiring training for supervisors and employees, and mandating that the Office of the Inspector General creates an administrative manual to further detail procedures relating to whistleblower complaints. Sponsors Dorsey, President Middleton, Henry, Schleifer, Stokes, Scott, Costello, Pinkett, Cohen, Burnett, Clark, Reisinger, Bullock, Sneed.
This has been assigned to the Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee.
City Council Bill 190378, Ethics Board Administration and Staff. For the purpose of appointing the Inspector General to serve as the Executive Director of the Board of Ethics, requiring that the Office of the Inspector General provide staff to the Board of Ethics, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsors Dorsey, President Middleton, Henry, Costello, Bullock, Sneed, Burnett, Clark, Reisinger.
We'd like to add Councilman Stokes, and Chair recognizes, and Councilman Schleyer. The Chair recognizes Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Madam President. So we've got a package of three bills here, all working to address matters of ethics and transparency. First, I want to thank the folks at DLR for all the work to draft these bills. I really appreciate the hard work that you do. Thank you. So the first of these three, Financial Disclosures, Fixing Filers, Filing, and Filings. This was inspired last year when we learned that not only had our then recently instated police commissioner not been filing his federal taxes properly, but had also not been filing his financial disclosures with the city, which, for me, raised the question of how do people who are required under city law to file such disclosures end up not filing, and we have to find out under such circumstances as we did? So, you know, worked with a number of people to kind of suss out some amenable, what I believe amenable, ways of us improving our knowledge of who is required to file, and not just us collectively knowing in some database, but ensuring that the people themselves who have to file know that they have to file, which apparently is a challenge. And so this bill addresses that, and then on the back end, when folks are not filing in a timely fashion, how we, through a prescribed system, ensure that they are getting the message that you need to file, and there are consequences for not filing, and that we do this for a reason. Also, more recently, it became, it seemed to be a timely addition to add to the financial disclosure form that we be required to disclose any boards that we sit upon. That is the first of these three bills, and I thank you, thank all my colleagues for the unanimous cosponsorship on this bill. The second one of these, Whistleblower Rights and Responsibilities, came about in 2018 as I was working through the first drafts of the bill that created the charter amendment for the Inspector General's office to be established in the charter. There were a number of things in the early parts of discussion of that bill that, through discussions with a wide range of people, started to seem more appropriate to be done in the city code rather than be done in the city charter, and this is one of them. We have an old and rather antiquated employee protected disclosures clause in the city code as it is. This repeals and replaces that with something that is more in step with best practices from a national level. And the third here is this Ethics Board Administration and Staff, and this is one that I, that, and I also want to say thank you to my colleagues for the unanimous cosponsorship on the Whistleblower Rights and Responsibilities bill. And this third one, the Ethics Board, this bill changes who is the overseer, the executive director and staff of the Ethics Board for the city. Who is it that is taking in the financial disclosures that so many are required to file? And who is it that is looking into investigations when the board determines to open a case, looking into ethics and different things? So I appreciate all the cosponsors on this bill, and I look forward to any debate on it, and thank you all.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee. Resolutions to be introduced.
City Council Resolution 190151R, Informational Hearing, Community Reinvestment Act. For the purpose of inviting the Commissioner of the Department of Housing and Community Development and the representatives of the community banking programs at PNC, Capital One, BBNT, MNT, Citibank, and Wells Fargo to describe how the requirements of the Community Reinvestment Act are being met in Baltimore City. Sponsors Stokes, President Middleton, Henry, Schleifer, Scott, Costello, Pinkett, Dorsey, Cohen, Burnett, Clark, Reisinger, Bullock, Sneed.
This has been assigned to the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Resolution 190152R, Genocide Awareness Month, April 2019. For the purpose of recognizing April as Genocide Awareness Month. Sponsors Stokes, President Middleton, Henry, Schleifer, Scott, Costello, Pinkett, Dorsey, Cohen, Burnett, Clark, Reisinger, Bullock, Sneed.
Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to suspend the rules for immediate adoption.
Second by Councilman Cohen. All those in favor of suspending the rules for immediate adoption of this resolution, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. The motion carries. The rules are suspended.
Madam President, I move the resolution favorable.
Second by Councilman Schleyer. All those in favor of adopting a resolution 19-0152R, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The motion carries, and this resolution is adopted. You can find the consent calendar in Section A at the back of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Approve.
So moved by Henry, and second by Scott. All those in favor of approving the consent calendar, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. The motion carries, and this calendar is approved. Chair recognizes Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Madam President. I move short titles for the remainder of the meeting.
Second by Councilman Scott. All those in favor to change, to move to short titles of third reader, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. The motion moves, and...
[laughing]
Third reader for final passage.
City Council Bill 180277, Zoning, IMU Industrial Mixed Use Zoning Districts. President Middleton, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 180305, Rezoning Certain Properties in the Harwood Community. President Middleton, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 190321, Zoning, Modifications to Approved Final Development Plans. President Middleton, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 190328, Urban Renewal, Hamilton Business Area Amendment. President Middleton, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 190345, Rezoning 1401 Woodall Street and 1446 Stevenson Street. President Middleton, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved. Third reader enrolled for final passage.
City Council Bill 180293, Baltimore Tourism Improvement District Establishment. President Middleton, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved. Committee announcements. Any committee announcements? Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Madam President. Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee will be holding five hearings on Tuesday, May 7th, in chambers, first at 10:00 a.m. I move to suspend rules 10-2 and 10-3 to announce a hearing.
All those in, is there a second, Councilman Stokes? All those in favor of suspending the rules?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So Tuesday, May 7th, five hearings in Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee, first at 10:00 a.m., is 19-0365, City Property, Renaming the Shake 'n Bake Family Fund Center to the Glenn Doughty Shake 'n Bake Family Fund Center. At 10:05 a.m., Bill 19-0347, City Property, Naming the Baseball Diamond Located in the Southeast Portion of Swan Park, 300 West Macoma Street, the Al Kline Field. At 10:10 a.m., Council Bill 19-0354, Underground Conduit System for Cables, Wires, and Similar Facilities. At 10:20 a.m., Council Bill 19-0137R, Informational Hearing, Baltimore City Recycling Program. At 10:30 a.m., Council Bill 19-0139R, Investigative Hearing, Municipal Composting. Thank you, Madam President.
Chair recognizes Chair Reisinger.
Madam President, I move the suspension of rules 10-2 and 10-3.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of suspending the rules, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The motion carries. The motion is adopted.
Madam President, the Land Use and Transportation Committee will hold a hearing on Bill 19-0366 on May the 8th at 1:10 p.m. in the council chambers. This is Commercial Parking Facilities Revisions. Also, the committee will hold a hearing on Bill 19-0349 on January the 5th at 1:00 p.m. in the council chambers. This is Zoning, Conditional Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Two Dwelling Units in the R8 Zoning District, Variance is at 29 East Lombard Street.
You want to repeat that one?
Yes. The date, Madam President, on Bill 19-0349 is June the 5th. The committee will hold a hearing on Bill 19-0356 on June 5th at 1:05 p.m. in the council chambers. This is zoning map amendments at 123 South Chester Street. Thank you, Madam President.
Any more committee announcements on this side? Committee announcements? Chair recognizes Vice Chair Pinkett.
Thank you, Madam President. The Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee would like to announce two hearings scheduled for Thursday, May 16th, 2019. The first one to be held at 10:00 a.m. is for City Council Bill 18-0331, Corrective Consumer Price Index, Using a Adjustment of the Energy Tax Rate. And the second one, City Council Bill 18-0326, scheduled for 10:05 a.m., is for the sale of property, air rights area over a portion of the public right of way of the 4100 block of Hillen Road. Thank you.
Any more committee announcements on this side? Regular Chair recognizes Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Madam President. For the second year, Third District residents can apply for the Artist District Grant Program for Arts. This is a program that I created last year. We, through fiscal sponsorship with the Baltimore City Foundation, were able to raise money in the form of tax deductible contributions and award four $3,000 grants to artists who reside in the Third City Council District. It was a really great success last year. We had over 80 applicants, and it was a, I couldn't be happier with the results. Two awards went to visual artists, one went to a musician, and one went to a writer. And we have just, at the end of last week, opened up applications for the second year here for a similar set of awards. Four $3,000 grants will be awarded later in the summer, and anybody interested can learn more and get to the application by visiting artistdistrict.org. Thanks.
Regular announcements. Chair recognizes Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, I rise for two reasons today. First, to ask that Councilman Reisinger offer a moment of silence for the now 80 victims of homicide in Baltimore City this year, and for those lost to the opioid crisis as well. But also, colleagues, as you know, over the past three years, you guys have been annoyed by a TV camera following me around from time to time here in City Hall, as I am the, one of the subjects of a documentary that is premiering on PBS tonight at 10:00 p.m. called Charm City. So everyone who is under the sound of my voice, please take time to watch the documentary. It shows a different side of Baltimore, not just myself, Major Brown from the Southern District, two police officers in the Southern District, Alex Long from Safe Streets East, and Mr. C from the Rose Street Community Center, as all people working every day here in Baltimore for one cause, and that's to reduce violence in Baltimore. So you can catch it on PBS tonight at 10:00 p.m. or stream it on their website. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more regular announcements? Chair recognizes Councilman Pinkett.
Thank you, Madam, thank you, Madam President. Tomorrow morning at 9:30 a.m., myself, along with Ex-Officio Mayor Young, Councilman Costello, and Councilman Bullock, we have the opportunity to announce a new initiative for West Baltimore, Central West Baltimore, called West Baltimore Gateway. We're excited about a collaboration between the Penn North Communities, Druid Heights, and Upton for a community development, economic development revitalization effort for those sets of communities. It will be the first time that they come together in this type of collaboration. We really see this as an effort to really drive substantive investment into the community that for so long has been neglected. So that's tomorrow at 9:30. It'll be held at the Marquee for the Royal Theater on Pennsylvania Avenue, and so we're excited about this collaborative effort. Thank you.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Councilman Pinkett. I'd like to recognize Councilman Reisinger on the floor again for a committee announcement correction of a date.
Yes, Madam President. We just, I just found out that there's budget hearings that day, so the Land Use and Transportation Committee on Bill 19-349 will be January 12th at 1:00 p.m. in the...
June.
June. I don't know why I say January, June. June the 12th at 1:00 p.m. in the council chambers. And also, the committee will hold a hearing on Bill 19-0356. It's been changed to June 12th at 1:05 p.m. in the council chambers.
Thank you. And also for a regular announcement, I'd like to recognize a moment of silence for the Tuskegee Airmen Lamell A. Lewin. Lamell Arthur Lewin Jr., a retired Carver Vocational Technical High School science teacher, who was a member of the World War II unit known as the Tuskegee Airmen, died on April 14th. Mr. Lewy was the last Baltimore-area member of the Airmen, the first group of African-American military aviators in the United States Armed Forces. So a moment of silence for Lamell A. Lewy. And also, just to recognize, this is, just to celebrate, today is Happy Earth Day. Thank you, Councilman Dorsey, for bringing that to my attention. Any more regular announcements?
She said Earth. She recognized Councilman Costello.
Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Madam President. I guess this is a committee announcement, but the Budget and Appropriations Committee will hold our budget hearings the week of June 3rd through June 7th. We haven't formally announced that yet because the bills haven't been introduced to the council yet, but as a placeholder, and I think I've communicated that with everyone on the council, so that'll be June 3rd through June 7th, Monday through Friday. Those hearings will be televised here in chambers, and those are open to the public. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Thank you. Adjournment, Chair recognizes Councilman Risinger.
The council, the next meeting of the city council will be held on Monday, April 29. And Madam President, I ask for a moment of silence for Lamell Lewy, the 80 homicide victims in the city of Baltimore, and also for Dorothy Detling, whose mother is... Daughter is Linda Baker, who works for Councilman Brandon Scott.